Monday, October sixteenth to order. We have a full slate of commissioners, so we don't need any alternates. First order of business is to approve the minutes of October second. And I think there's been a couple of things. Line thirty-eight. On the first page. It says the property of Butson Land to the west that creates a wetland. I don't think create is the right verb. That is a wetland, I guess.
Yes, it contains.
Contains.
Contains is probably it. Yeah, thanks Bruce.
Something like that would be fixed and. David has found that on line eighty repaired should be prepared, I guess. Anybody else find anything?
Uh, excuse me, yeah, I'm uh. Line one eighty-two. Starting one eighty-one to one eighty-two says they could limit food truck locations to food and beverages only. That's a little confusing. I think we mean to sites that already provide food and beverages.
Correct. Yeah, that makes sense.
I guess. Yes.
That's what it meant to me, but it didn't say it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that was a little confusing. And I did, you know, also other commissioners agree with this, but at the end of the meeting last, two weeks ago, we did ask that the town attorney come in and provide an update on the litigation. I think I would like to see that referenced in the minutes.
Oh, sure.
Who can object to that?
Okay, that's all I have.
I think at the moment, there's nothing happening there. Um, okay. And on line six, I'm the chairman, not the chair. Being an old person. Anyway, I don't care. All right, get a motion to approve the minutes. As modified.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ann. All in favor? Close.
I was abstained because I wasn't abstaining, so I wasn't yet.
Okay, so passes four, nothing. Two extensions.
A question here coming in.
Okay, the next order of business is a public hearing. Mr. Vice Chairman, can you read the?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, you don't need to do that. You opened the public hearing previously and continue this item.
Oh.
So you do not need to reread the call sheet.
But it wouldn't hurt.
So this is a.
Anyway.
You certainly can. I'm just saying you don't need to.
I'm fine asking all that out to you.
Okay.
As it were continued.
All right. Okay, we'll continue the public hearing. We had no comments last time and the applicant wasn't able to be here, so.
I think we've got an applicant tonight, so.
An applicant to explain to us what's being asked for and.
I'm sorry, I think we're here to review the flood zone plans, which I had in.
Would you, excuse me, would you come to the podium because then you'll be on TV.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so if um, so this is um.
And name and address, please.
Um, so my name is Charlene LaCroy, of sixty-three Suffield Street in Munterlocks, Connecticut. The address that we're here for is forty-eight Old Mill Court in Simsbury.
Right.
So I wasn't sure if you wanted my address or the project's address.
Okay. That's where you went, that's.
Just by point, just walking through, watch your, watch your plan.
Sure, um, so as you can see by photos, the property has some balconies that are on either side of it. So the original plan was um, a lot smaller than what was around it, so they wanted to extend. Um, so all we're doing is just adding on to the existing balcony. And to do so, I need to dig three posts to put concrete piers into the ground to provide a support and structure.
Right.
So that's what we're here for.
So there is that.
Pretty much.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would just.
Just extending on to a desk.
I would just remind everybody that again, anytime there's construction in the floodplain, it requires a special exception review. This item um, did proceed uh, two weeks, two weeks ago, the day after your meeting, to the Inland Wetlands Commission and got a recommendation of approval at the inland, Inland Wetlands Conservation Commission meeting.
Okay, good. Do the commissioners have questions?
Um, I'll start. That picture to the right suggests that the stick is already being built.
Uh, yes, sir, we did begin construction.
Did you get a permit?
I'm awaiting approval. So I've applied for the permit. Yeah, so I applied for the permit, so we've filled out to what was existing. And what's there that you see is temporary, all awaiting approval.
So you haven't put the concrete piers in the ground?
Correct.
Okay. We were waiting to catch you, that's it.
Ah.
Okay. Say, she a question, Bruce?
Um, no, so what you see there is just temporary.
Yes, it does, yeah.
Are there, are the people have questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There's a garden is recommended to offset that, okay.
Yes. And now we pick up and you just place a four line.
It's a very, it's a very small, I was gonna say, it's a very small offset.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the recommendation was to just remove a small amount of whatever.
Um, so I believe the concern was over displacement of water, um, which at the additional garden would act to absorb that water. So that it wouldn't, yeah, so it, there wouldn't be any increase of floodwater, which.
Makes sense.
I know that um, in the engineer's report, she says exactly how much and and yeah, it's the same recommendation, just that the volume can be accommodated in a small planting or flower bed garden.
Is that area marked on your plan? Is it marked on the plan here?
Um, it is, you should believe that is included in that packet.
Let me pull up the application, which I, all I have is just the easy slide here, so.
With the garden in black, little hash marks there. I'm sorry, sorry, you can't see this.
I'm sorry, yeah, it's hard to see it.
Yeah.
Is that the garden?
Um. Actually, that's where I had marked out for piers.
Oh, I see, I see.
So the garden would be in between that, the rest of the markings are just where the um, the silt fence is currently.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Is there a way to identify for them where the garden is going to be?
Um, so we.
Based on this picture?
So we'd like to put it um, right underneath and around where those piers are, so that would give us like fourteen feet by maybe two feet, which I think would be more than sufficient to accommodate for the water.
Yeah. I think that was in the wetlands understanding is that it would be in that location.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I apologize, I did not specifically mark it out.
Okay. She's curious.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
How is the garden accommodating what grass wouldn't?
Um, my assumption is just because they would be.
I'm just wondering, is it a specific kind of garden or?
Their plants?
Because you're gonna have just grass there otherwise, right?
It would be just grass otherwise, yes.
So it's not a permeable issue, it's?
I think they have to create basically a hole that matches the hole that they, that they fills in.
So it's a hole, it's a wet garden?
So it's, so the garden will be, has to be a little bit depressed.
It's a, it's a.
Okay.
Correct.
The loose soil would absorb the water value?
Yeah, it's as you, you break into the ground.
Yeah, I think the landmine would, yeah.
And they calculate how much water would have gone in and now you've got to be able to accommodate that amount of water.
Yeah.
If there's no more than one cubic foot.
Yeah. It is not more than one cubic foot.
So.
It's not a lot.
It is.
It's hard, it's hard.
Um, a little more than half.
Congratulations.
Yeah. So it has to be a depressed garden.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't have to call it that, O'Donohue.
I'm just wondering why a garden is better than grass, I'm just trying to figure it out, you know, like it's still. It'll be a happy garden.
If you just have that.
Okay, I let's water in, so.
It'd be a happy garden.
It's a rain garden. Okay.
Any more comments or questions? Anybody in the public care to speak to this application? Going once? Does anyone in the public care to speak to this application? Did we receive any comments, George?
We have not.
Okay. Okay, good. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ann. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Anybody abstain? Okay, carry six, nothing. The public hearing is closed. Okay, now let's move to consider that application. For public, for a special exception. Somebody want to make a motion to?
I'll move that we approve application twenty-three thirty-four.
Yes, there's a text.
Yeah. Thank you. I wonder nobody else.
Yeah, it's.
Come on. I, I move that the zoning commission approve application twenty-three thirty-four of Christopher Leppert owner and welcome for improvement applicant for special exception pursuant to section six floodplain zone and the Simsbury zoning regulations to allow for the installation of three piers in order to enlarge an existing deck at forty-eight Old Mill Court. Assessors nap G ten block one forty-eight lot zero three nine. Simsbury, Connecticut oh six oh seven zone RD. The special exception criteria found in section twelve of the town of Simsbury zoning regulations have been better satisfied. Those considerations include orderly development. Proposed residential improvement meets the requirements for the residential zone and therefore constitutes orderly development. A building and administrative zoning compliance permit required prior to the start of the project. Property values, the proposed improvement has no negative impacts on property values. Public safety, the proposed improvement has no known impacts on public safety. Traffic considerations, there are no traffic concerns or considerations with this application. Landscaping and buffers, no landscaping or buffers are required for this application. Relationship to utility systems, drainage systems and impact on community facilities. There is no expected impact on these systems or facilities. End of motion.
Yeah.
We disagree with no landscaping requirements.
It's not landscaping, it's a hole. You've got to accommodate the water.
Yeah, I think that you could say that no landscaping or buffers are required excepting the small planting.
Required garden.
Excepting the required garden, right.
Whatever we're calling it.
I would do that.
I would just rather say that.
Okay. All right, Bruce, is that okay?
I'm sorry. It was fine with me the way it was. It also is fine with something slightly amended.
Okay, Dana. It says not required for this application except for.
Except for as noted on the, is it noted on the drawings or?
As recommended by the Inland Wetlands.
As required by the wetlands?
I think that's correct.
All right.
As required by wetlands.
That's correct, okay.
So just accept the answer.
Send a second?
Second.
Right of a second.
I can second it.
I second.
Or Dan? I can second it. Okay, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? It carries six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bruce.
Appreciate your time today.
Okay, general commission business.
So I've got um, just two briefing items. The first is, uh, we included a memorandum in your packet related to Public Act twenty-three one forty-two, which is a, which is a broader kind of housing act that is effective October first, twenty twenty-three. And in that, in that legislation, and it caught, caught a number, it caught most of the planning community and local governments by surprise, but in that legislation is a revision and a requirement related to, uh, related to family group and childcare homes, family care homes. So that, those are in-house or in-residence childcare homes between zero and six children under one category and six to twelve in another category. And what the state law says is that all, all communities, all municipalities must or shall treat those uses just like we treat single-family homes. They are the same, they are the equivalent of a family. Uh, and, and it does one more thing. It requires an atta, an attestation from the local government on an annual basis that our regulations say that and we in fact treat those uses similar to single-family homes. So in practice, we do do that. We, we always have, but we, we are recommending a minor change to your zoning ordinance, your zoning regulations that allows for that attestation and allows and clearly shows that we would treat family and group care homes just like we treat single-family houses. And so we, we did draft.
What was the timing that we have to do that by?
So, um, it is a, the attestation is required by December first. Either we say that we have those rules in place by December first or as an alternative, we can tell OPM at the state level that this is the process of how we will achieve that. You can lay out a schedule. So we can, we can work on it now and get it to your November twentieth meeting or we can, we can brief the new commission in December and kind of set out a way to achieve it. There's no, there's no real, there's no real negative harm to us not having it done by December first. We just need to tell the state, we're gonna have it done over this period of time.
Okay.
So.
Commissioners have a preference? I think we should get this over.
As I read it, it's a pretty minor change.
I think it is quite a minor change and we have time, we have time under the, um, we've got time to get it to COG and get it to and get advertising done to get to your November twentieth meeting.
So we should have a motion to ask staff to put this on our twentieth, November twentieth?
I'll second it.
Go second. I made the motion, I guess.
Okay.
Everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, okay, carry six, nothing, please put it on the twentieth agenda.
Okay.
For the public hearing.
Yeah, we'll do that. So I, I put this under planning director report. I'm just gonna just, just remind you of a couple of things. One, next Tuesday, October twenty-fourth, seven PM is the plan of conservation and development public hearing at seven PM at the library. You're invited? Just as a reminder. Two, we uh, we do have, for those members that are going to continue, we do have a training requirement on an annual basis. So if you haven't met your training yet, uh, what we will do is, is we have a matrix of who's done the training, who hasn't done the training. And we'll send a little email out and we do have some new, um, so we've got some video links to the, to, if you haven't, if you weren't involved in the CLEAR training, we have those by video link and it's, it's essentially three hours of general land use training and one hour of housing training.
So curious, because I did do the CLEAR one, but I have no recollection of when I did it. Was that this year? Like, I know it was in the winter, but I can't remember.
So it definitely is this year because it started in, it started this calendar year.
Okay, so then.
It, it, yeah, you wouldn't have done it.
Okay, so then I.
I'm looking more.
And we have a record of it.
Okay, good, just let me know if you need, because I think I might be okay.
Okay, I will, we will, and I'm not, not pointing out anyone in particular, just saying.
He's showing off.
I'm showing, no, no, I'm pointing my cellphone because I just don't remember.
But again, as we, as we, as, as, as COGS and those kinds of places announce them, we will, we'll always send them out to you. But really it's kind of your responsibility to, to, you know, to stay up on it. We'll help as much as we can.
What's the deadline for completion, George?
So it is, it's a, it's, 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 it's a, it's a, it's, it's an annual, but it is based on your appointment or you know, date of office. So, you know, if you joined in June, then you have, you know, June twenty-four.
Correct.
Will CLEAR be doing it again every year or?
I, I, I do think they will continue that program, yes. And I, and I, I think there will be other groups that'll, that'll get involved and provide more and more availability. Thank you. Um, I did want to mention two other items. So November twentieth is the, the next and the last meeting for this constituted board. And you have a couple of items, food truck, public hearing, cannabis public hearing, if necessary, family group home stuff. So for your December fourth meeting.
Not us. December fourth, the new board takes.
Yeah, just letting you know that we're not, I'm not gonna schedule any, any items for December fourth. That would be just your, that would be the group's constitution and.
Right, but our last meeting is.
Is November twenty, that's right, that's right.
Okay. We don't have to be here on the fourth to leave.
No. So we did, so, so effective today is the Hartford South application is deemed received. Came in late last week, so we have that. I will put it in the Dropbox. It's a, it's a big file, so we're working on shrinking it just a little bit, so. Uh, but it's a complete package and, and I think at this point, we're gonna, we're gonna recommend with the change overcoming that, that you, you schedule that public hearing and you don't have to make a decision today, but I guess you kind of do. Not, is to schedule it for the December eighteenth meeting. You have sixty-five days from today to schedule that public hearing. That does fall just within that date. You're certainly not gonna be ready to hear it on the twentieth of November. And so that's, that's where that calendar is going to, is.
We have big progress on the north piece, because it seems pretty slow going.
Which the two out, two commercial buildings, is that what you're asking about?
Well, yes, but also we've added all the things that need to be taken care of. There's just a lot of things that residents have talked about there. Exposed conduit, drain covers, landscaping that's not done, sidewalks that are not done, headers, things.
So the answer is that we have been in contact with the developer.
Okay.
And itemized many, if not all of those things.
Okay.
And waiting on a, we're putting a schedule together when that stuff needs to be done. We have bonds for landscaping and many of those things, you know, cash, but there are some items that are missing.
You have residents there already, so you know, it's tough to have it in that disrepair.
And having. Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Do the residents know the uncom, uncompliment?
Now, so there's a bond for the external site stuff, not, not punch list items in their apartment. That is, we're gonna have to work that complaint guy complaint essentially.
So they have to make a complaint together?
Yeah, well, otherwise we're not gonna know that the surround hasn't been done in an apartment or something. All right, there's no way to know. And, and the last, and we would just itemize it as we can and work with the building official. And they're, they're all COs, so we would, we would consider those items outstanding, but cosmetic likely. But we'll continue to liaise with, with that developer. They understand we have concerns about certainly the site stuff.
Could you just, uh.
Go ahead. One more moment, actually, because when we, Tony Giorgio was here talking about approval that we gave for our apartments there. Explanation was that there's one CO per building of apartments. And down at Silverman's project, my sense of it always was that there was one CO per apartment, not one per building. How could that be different?
Now, I believe that the way we have issued those certificates of occupancy is all of, so all of the units would need to be done in that building to get the CO. So I'm saying what I think you're saying. It's not one apartment at a time, it's the building. So if you had a stick of six apartments, you know, as you.
No, we're counting and trying to figure out what was ninety percent, what was, you know, the change. It was all about three, roughly three hundred units.
Yeah, yes.
It wasn't about twenty buildings, it was three hundred buildings.
No, but that's how it's, that's how they're doing it.
Anybody who sat here for the meetings, relatives to Silverman over the last couple of years, we had thought COs would apply.
My apartment, I agree with you.
And I'm sitting right here, and you are doing, that's what we thought. I'm not sure how that happened.
But, but if they're issuing COs.
If you weren't here in the beginning and it was already booming, you got here. It's always been Silverman over two, since COs apply part. I'm not disputing what's the proper way.
Right.
I just find it confusing.
Well, when you, I guess when we were doing the math, I guess when we were doing the math, say ninety percent, ninety percent equaled two hundred and eighty-two units. So those two hundred and eighty-two units might have spilled over to a, an additional building, let's say. That's all I can think of. I mean, there wasn't, they're not, they were.
They never used that for reason, in fact, I think.
Uh, well, yeah, we should have, I think. So, but.
Why are you doing it too?
Sorry, sorry for going off track.
No, that's okay.
And there isn't.
I've been, I will tell you that I've been in, we have been, been, been talking to a potential tenant for the entire uh, eight thousand square foot commercial building, the one on the left side, not the right side.
The one that's.
Not building.
Under construction.
The same as on the.
One that's not building.
Correct. Correct, sir.
Do we need a motion to set the public hearing?
I, I don't, I don't think you do. You don't. We'll just work with the new chairman to deal with that. You don't have to vote for it. It's deemed received and it'll go out to internal process and then we'll see in December on it.
Yeah, but you, they will meet on the fourth. We have time to notice it.
No, probably not.
So we should make a motion to set the public hearing for the Silverman's lower application on December fourteenth or whatever it is.
Eighteenth.
It's the eighteenth. Yeah, I mean, I, I think you can do, you don't, you don't normally do that. Usually, we, I, I work with the chairman to say this is, this is kind of the schedule, but you, you can, you certainly can set that date.
Well, we just did one for this one, that's all.
I just saw that, uh, there's no uncertainty about this. I don't know what else Silverman's up to, but we're talking about the, the plan for eight, five hundred and eighty.
The new one, that's correct. Yes, sir.
I think there's gonna be a lot of people interested in that.
Yes.
And I think that we should give reasonable time for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
Notice.
We don't want to be accused of having.
I. I, I agree and it'll be hard to get a venue, so if you give me enough time to get a venue, it would be, would be great.
Well, and that's right before the holidays.
Well, it is, the timeline's a timeline.
Oh, it's extended.
So. The tradition about, you know, the relying on regulations and, and things that are in place at a particular time fixes the requirements for the application, right? So if there's a new P O C D adopted a few weeks from now, does the application being accepted yesterday or the day before, whatever the date was issued? They get five-year-old P O C D or, or the one before that, I'm not sure when. No, they would get the one that was five years ago.
I'm not sure that's true, but.
Same thing with the.
It's, it's a policy document.
Zoning regulation.
It's a, it's a zoning regulations, yes, a hundred percent, but the P O C D is a policy document. We apply those, those, those policies as newly adopted. So we, we would rely on the new one.
Okay. But the date of record is the date that's associated with when they submitted, when you opened the mail.
Yes. Yes.
No, it's today.
It's today technically, yes, correct.
It's the first meeting after.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, first meeting after receipt, receipt. But again, I've got hard copies at the office. You wanna come and take a look at them, I'll also put them in your, in your drop boxes.
Do you have more updates?
That's it?
Oh, wow.
It's like the best meeting ever.
We didn't beat Kevin's record.
I've been, it's like a seven, six-minute one.
Yeah, that was impressive.
Yeah. I forgot what that was, but yeah.
Twenty-one minutes, I think.
Yeah.
Twenty-nine.
Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I thought we were talking about the daycare center.
No, I was, so we had, we. Daycare center, what, like, oh, no, they, they canceled. I'm sorry, I should have, we revised the agenda. They, they canceled. Rich Korea was going to come in and talk about a potential daycare center at, in front of Aspen Green and they, they couldn't get their group together to get in tonight.
Well, I, I was puzzled because the thirty, number thirty-four is in front of the marijuana factory. It's not in front of Aspen Green. Is the whole parcel number thirty-four?
It, the whole parcel is number thirty-four right now.
Including the, the self-storage. the self-storage?
No, it's got, it has a new address, it's thirty-four, oh, it's seventy, it's been assigned seventy.
Where else?
The stealth storage place.
So that's seventy in the.
Yes.
Okay, your motion to adjourn.
Second?
Who?
Me.
Okay, Diane, seconded by Tony.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Thank you guys. Half an hour.